Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the village board meeting of September thirteenth. Please join us in our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Roll call, Mr. Thomas.
Trustee Purcell.
Here.
Trustee Baloo.
Here.
Trustee Willis.
Here.
Trustee Harris Jones. Trustee Hyperman. Trustee Roman.
Here.
President Hope.
Here. Representing staff this evening. To my left is our village manager Napoleon Heady. To my right is our village attorney Chris Cummings. To the audience at right. Our director of public works, John Schaper. Police chief Denise McGrath. Fire chief Bob Grabowski and finance director Dennis Lubin. The minutes of August twenty-third. Any additions or corrections? Trustee Purcell.
Nothing.
Trustee Baloo.
Nothing.
Trustee Wallace.
Nothing.
Trustee Roman.
Nothing.
May I have a motion to approve the claim, the minutes, please?
So moved.
Been moved by trustee Purcell, seconded by trustee Baloo. Roll call, please.
Trustee Purcell.
I.
Trustee Baloo.
I.
Trustee Willis.
I.
Trustee Roman.
I.
President Hope.
Hi. The minutes are approved. The claims list in the amount of one million, one hundred thousand, two hundred and sixty-three dollars and thirty-one cents. Comments or questions? Trustee Purcell. Trustee Baloo. Trustee Willis.
Nothing.
Trustee Roman.
Nothing.
I have a motion to approve, please.
So moved. Second.
Been moved by trustee Roman, seconded by trustee Purcell. Roll call, please.
Trustee Purcell.
I.
Trustee Baloo.
I.
Trustee Willis.
I.
Trustee Roman.
I.
President Hope.
Hi. Of that one over one million dollar claims, that four items comprise the majority of that list. Our payment to the city of Harvey for water was two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. One month's employees' health insurance, two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. Payment to Thorn Creek sanitary district for one month was ninety-four thousand dollars. And a payment to Thorn, the village of Short, Thornton for shared Bernard sale bags increase on their expansion was eighty-eight thousand dollars. That amounted to six hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars, so that claims was sixty percent. Hear from the audience. If anyone in the audience would like to address the board on any subject not on the agenda, please raise your hand. Yes, ma'am.
Hi. Do I need a second person?
Please, please come.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Kirsten. Thank you for having this meeting tonight and inviting us all to join and speak on it. Um, I did submit an email yesterday. I'm not sure if it had been received yet or not, uh, with something to add for the public commentary, not specifically related to the claims list. So is this the appropriate time to talk about it?
Go right ahead.
Okay.
It's not an item on the agenda, is it?
No, it's not. Okay, thank you. Um, first, I want to thank you Mayor Hopefeld and also, um, Director of Economic and Community Development Angela Masaro. So I apologize if I mispronounced her name. Uh, for trying to help save Bookies bookstore. I'm not sure, excuse me, how many people in the audience are here on that matter. Um, as you probably all very well know, uh, Bookies is being forced to close at the end of this month because their rent was dramatically increased and there was not a solution found with their lawyers and with the landlord's lawyers. Um, and I was just wondering if there might be something we could figure out to prevent this from happening in the future to our small businesses. They're very important to our downtown Homewood life and as you've seen, not only during festivals, but how many, uh, the public outpouring of support there has been for bookies and all the other businesses in the area to keep our small businesses here, to keep it lively for a good community atmosphere. And really, it builds the bonds of community for all of us, I believe. Um, so I just think it'd be really good if we could figure out some way to prevent this from happening. I don't know how much power we have as a board, as a community, to mitigate how much landlords can increase their rent. I understand that property taxes are high and have been risen recently. Um, but I know when we are luring businesses into the community to encourage them to put down roots and really grow here, we're able to offer them TIF funds from the government, which helps to secure them a spot and get them started. But there is nothing really in place, so far as I know, to continue that process and ensure that they are able to really stay here much longer. Uh, we've just come through a pandemic that is still affecting businesses left and right. And the fact that Bookies is still here at all is wonderful testament to how much government support and local smart support there has been for it. We need to do something that's not just related to exceptional circumstances of a pandemic to keep our small businesses here. We need to do something where we can keep them here because we respect that they have needs as well as their landlords and they need to be supported in it on both sides. Um, this is, Bookies is not the first, uh, small business in our community to be subjected to a large rent increase. Three years ago, Civil Tea Gardens, which is now currently Vicky's Fashion Jewelry. I was spoken, had spoken with the owner at that time, and she said that her rent was getting increased dramatically and it was no longer feasible for her to remain in her space. This is the exact same case on the surface, at least, as what Bookies is going through. And these are both businesses that have become a part of the community, who are well-respected, well-liked, well-frequented, and/or were also maybe pet projects of the business owners, but they poured their heart and soul into it and they received that in return from us. So I would like us to consider ways where we might be able to prevent our small businesses from being forced out of their spaces due to landlords increasing rent in even considering increases in property taxes or other means that landlords would decide to increase rent or even try and push their renters out in the interest of, um, having an empty storefront as a possible allure to a landlord selling their property because a broker wants there to be an empty property on the lot. So.
Okay, to address some of your concerns rather briefly, feel free to stop in on a Saturday and I'll go into more detail with you. Both parties, both the, uh, the landlord and the, let's see, Bookies, uh, are good people. Uh, they're both trying to make it. As you said, the landlord has higher taxes that they have to account for. Uh, Bookies, uh, certainly felt that, uh, the rent increase was the impetus to force them out. However, in talking to them, they said their business wasn't there. So the onus is really on the community. And those of us who frequent the bookstores, we appreciate it, but people buy on Amazon, people buy online. And if only people would buy more in town and frequent our business, not only Bookies, but all of the stores. It would be beneficial. You're, you're right on. We have to support the small businesses and it's incumbent upon the community to do that. Please stop in and see me on Saturday. I'd be glad to go into detail with you.
Sounds great. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck to everyone.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the board this evening? If not, at this time, the appointment of fire and police commissioner Paul Jordan, Mr. Heady.
Yes, Mayor. So, I can go to the podium. Good evening, Mayor Ward, citizens' residents. Uh, Mayor Hopefeld is recommending Paul Jordan as an appointment to the fire and police commission. Paul is currently a deputy chief of police for the Matteson, Illinois Police Department and has lived in Homewood for over fourteen years. Once confirmed, Paul Jordan will fill the vacancy created by the passing of our former police and fire commissioner Levi Glass. Uh, this three-person board of police and fire commissioners, Anita Cochran, Patrick O'Malley, Patrick O'Meara, I'm sorry, and Paul Jordan will oversee the hiring and discipline of all public safety personnel. Paul is well-suited and well-capable for this appointment, in my opinion.
Please come up in this one.
I state my name.
I, Paul Jordan.
Having been appointed to.
Having been appointed to.
The Office of Fire and Police Commission.
The Office of Fire and Police Commission.
You solemnly swear.
You solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the municipal ordinances of the village of Homewood and.
Municipal ordinances of the village of Homewood.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Uh, the duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Police and Fire Commission.
Police and Fire Commission. Congratulations.
Books of office, Chief Grabowski.
Thank you, Mayor. Evening. Uh, so on this tight labor market we have nowadays, on August fifteenth, somebody stole my secretary. Antonia, there's you in the back. But I was lucky because I was able to steal for myself. I have Janine coming from the building department, fire department now. So I'd like to introduce Janine this evening. Janine started with Holman in two thousand thirteen as a part-time clerk with the building department. Uh, in two thousand nineteen, she was promoted to a full-time position as a clerk with the, uh, building department. Uh, she's been here nine years now total. Um, she's learned quite a lot. She wanted to make sure that anybody here wants to know anything about building permits or code enforcement, she's the person to see. Uh, in August, when, uh, Antonia accepted the position, uh, with the word Villachaw, um, I talked it over with, uh, village manager and I said, I think Janine would be great fit for that position. Uh, she's, uh, helped us out the fire department several times over the last few years during her retirements and, um, different times that we needed her. Uh, she's just been a great asset in general to the, uh, villagers as a whole, both with the building department and the fire department. Um, so she's looking forward to her new role. Uh, she's, uh, only been married not too long. She just closed out a house in Homewood last week. So she's now permanent resident of Homewood. I wanted to make sure you all knew that, too. Um, and her time off, her biggest joy is, uh, music, which we all know. Um, her husband's a drummer and he's a really good drummer. And, um, we got to hear some of his music and we get to rock and roll every day, so everything's good. So at this time, I would ask Janine to come up every morning.
Hi, state Janine. I've been, um, having been appointed to, having been appointed to the Office of Administrative Secretary, the Office of Administrative Secretary for the, uh, with a, I am, uh, you solemnly swear, you solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and I will support the Constitution of the United States. Constitution of the State of Illinois, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the municipal ordinances of the village of Homewood and the municipal ordinances of the village of Homewood. And I will faithfully discharge and I will faithfully discharge my duties as administrative secretary, my duties as administrative secretary to the best of my ability, to the best of my ability.
Mr. Lubin.
Recent staffing changes in the finance department required filling of the full-time water billing clerk position. Liza Javier was selected for this position after interviewing with the finance supervisor, assistant finance director and finance director. Liza's first day as full-time water billing clerk was July twenty-fifth. The process before joining the village of Homewood lies spent the past twenty-two years working in the offices of Robert Morris University and Roosevelt University. In those positions, she specialized in data management, customer service, managing records, following internal procedures, communication with members of the public, issue resolution, relationship building, collaboration with other departments. Liza's skills from the university environment were recognized by the interview team as transferable to the job requirements of water billing clerk. Liza lives in Whiting, Indiana, and listed Chicago Bears as her favorite sports team. Liza is happily married with three young adult children, one grandson and another one on the way. She enjoys swimming and spending time with her family. Recommended board action is to administer the oath of office to Liza Javier for the position of full-time water billing clerk in the finance department. Liza.
I state my name. I, having been appointed to, having been appointed to the position of water billing clerk, the position of water billing clerk. You solemnly swear, you solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States. Constitution of the State of Illinois, Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the municipal ordinances of the village of Homewood and the municipal ordinances of the village of Homewood. And that I will faithfully discharge my duties as water billing clerk. My duties as water billing clerk, to the best of my ability, to the best of my ability.
Mr. Heady.
Thank you, Mayor. Although it is true that Antonia was hired, initially hired, on November twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-one as the administrative secretary for the fire department. Uh, she served in the role well and was able to streamline many of the processes, but there was something that burned in Antonia's heart. It was the village manager's office. I'm sorry, it was the position. After the village manager's office revamped its former marketing director position into a communication engagement specialist position, we performed a recruitment for the position. After two sets of open interviews, the hiring team unanimously recommended Antonia an internal candidate as their top candidate. An offer was made to Antonia. She accepted and started as communication and engagement specialist on Monday, August fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two, and she has not looked back. Antonia.
Having been appointed to, having been appointed to the position of communication and engagement specialist. A position of communication and engagement specialist. You solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. Constitution of the State of Illinois. And the municipal ordinances of the village of Homewood. And that I will faithfully discharge. My duties as communication and engagement specialist. My duties as communication and engagement specialist, to the best of my ability, to the best of my ability.
Mr. Thomas, in the one, yeah, the result.
The board is asked to approve the reappointments of Kathy Austin and Raymond Pierre to the senior advisory committee. Their terms are extended for three years, expiring September thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five. The board is asked to pass an ordinance granting a variance from the parking requirements to allow for the operation of a retail building with twenty-six parking spaces at eight ten Maple Avenue. The building originally was occupied by a tire retailer. Current owner proposes to divide the space in two for a tobacco shop and a beauty supply store. The stores would be short parking spaces, according to the current municipal code. The planning and zoning commission recommended a variance. The board is asked to approve a variance for the Target Store, one seventy-six oh five Halsted Street, to allow for an additional one hundred eleven square feet of signage on the building from what the current sign ordinance standard allows. The board is asked to pass an ordinance amending the police towing license system to eliminate annual creation of an eligibility list for towing licenses. The proposal is to conduct an open application process when a license becomes available. Applications would be made in two categories, light to medium duty and heavy duty. The board is asked to authorize President Hopefeld to enter into an intergovernmental agreement between the village and the Illinois Department of Health Care and Family Services for reimbursement of unrecovered ambulance transports through Medicaid. The board is asked to pass resolution thirty-one twenty-one appropriating four hundred thousand dollars in motor, motor fuel tax funds to cover street patching from May one, two thousand twenty-two through April thirty, two thousand twenty-three. Board is asked to approve a contract for two thousand twenty-two sidewalk survey and saw cutting and grinding of trip hazard areas to Universal Concrete Grinding LLC of Gerard, Ohio. Lowest responsible bidder at a unit price of thirty-two dollars, sixty-three cents per cut or grind. The cost is not to exceed fifty thousand dollars. This is a cost-effective way to improve the twelve thousand five hundred known sidewalk trip hazards throughout the village. Public Works estimates replacing the sidewalks would cost as much as two point five million dollars. The board is asked to award a contract to Bruno's Tuck Pointing, the lowest responsible bidder, for tuck pointing at twenty eighteen Ridge Road, the Homewood Science Center annex building, in an amount not to exceed sixty thousand, three hundred and forty dollars, with a unit brick replacement cost thirty-five dollars and a unit parapet wall cap of a hundred and twenty-five dollars. Boards asked to authorize the village staff to apply for an Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program grant. Funding will be used for a road diet with on-street bike lanes for one hundred and eighty-third street from Dixie Highway East to Morgan Avenue. This application follows the village's study of a road diet in June. In July, the village was selected to participate in the Illinois Bike Walk Learning Collaborative, which includes the possibility of funding for a road diet. The application is due September thirty.
Thank you. Comments or questions from anyone in the audience? Word comments, trustee Purcell.
Nothing.
Trustee Baloo.
Nothing.
Trustee Willis.
Nothing.
Trustee Roman.
Nothing.
Mr. Heady, if you would please touch on point number I with the bike lane.
Yes, um, the village is obviously making application for ITEP grant, um, to fulfill some costs that we are anticipating for, uh, work along one hundred and eighty-third street. We plan to reach out to a couple of our elected officials, state legislators, for letters of support. We also plan to reach out to South Suburban Mayors and Managers, Village of Glenwood, HF School Districts, um, Homewood Public Library for letters of support as well for being impacted. Uh, we plan to have two follow-up meetings. I want John to just mention those for residents along one hundred and eighty-third street and Gottschalk Avenue.
Yeah, this Saturday, uh, September, uh, this Thursday, September fifteenth, from five to eight, you'll, we'll open house here in the boardroom. Any resident that has questions about a little guy or our findings, uh, due to our private study, to ask questions. Um, also, we'll be talking about the, uh, and we'll possibly, uh, we'll do the same thing on Saturday, uh, September seventeenth, from nine, Ellen's home, um,
Okay, thank you. It's Thursday from five to eight here in the village, uh, boardroom and Saturday night, um.
Yes.
And, but then they had a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda, please.
So moved. Second.
Been moved by trustee Purcell, seconded by trustee Roman. Roll call, please.
Trustee Purcell.
I.
Trustee Baloo.
I.
Trustee Willis.
I.
Trustee Roman.
I.
President Hope.
Hi. The consent agenda is approved. New business, Mr. Lubin.
The Ridgewood Liquor Store and Tap is located in the building at twenty fifty-nine Ridge Road and holds a class one village of Homewood liquor license. Class one liquor license allows for the retail sale of liquor for on and off-premise consumption with or without food. Judy Riggs, owner of the Ridgewood Tap, passed away earlier this summer. Uh, Scott Dunkle is looking to purchase this building and has requested a liquor license. The liquor commissioner supports issuing the requested license. Uh, after the real estate has been closed upon, Scott proposes to renovate the property, which will take about three or four months. Uh, the establishment will be closed during this time. Uh, recommended board action, discuss the liquor license request tonight. If the board is in favor of the request for a liquor license and after closing on the property and successfully completing all the steps required for a village of Homewood liquor license, including payment of all fees involved, direct staff to bring an ordinance, increasing the allowed number of class one liquor licenses for the Ridgewood Tap property at twenty fifty-nine Ridge Road to a future board meeting. I was a very short description of what Scott's got planned. He's here in the audience, so I invite him up to add to whatever I had to say and any questions you would have about the future of, uh, the Ridgewood Tap.
Well, as I sat down in the back of the room here, I'm looking out to the, I guess that's the, to the south, and I could see the new construction going up, and I'm so excited about Ridge Road. And I have been for quite some time. Uh, I just love the way Homewood is just revitalizing itself and I got gang tackled about twenty times at their Flossmore Fest on Saturday. People running up to me, Scott, I heard you behind the Ridgewood, heard you behind the Ridgewood. I've lived in the area my whole life. I raised five kids, all graduated HF and I fifth, so junior in college right now and, um, I've, uh, lived in, I've been living in Flossmore for the last twenty-eight years. Um, so I know pretty much everyone in town, Homewood and Flossmore, and I just love the area. Um, couldn't be prouder to be, uh, a resident and I've known the Riggs family for years and years and I saw the place deteriorate and I knew it was the right time to maybe make a move and Mrs. Riggs was sick and I actually saw her about two months before she passed, tell her my intent and she's known me. I've been in the liquor, in bar business for over thirty years. Even though I don't look that old, but I have been and, uh, I thought I was gonna settle down, slow down, but for some reason I've got renewed energy. I think after the pandemic, I just wanted to get out and do something and I'm just so positive about the future of Homewood. I think it's a real, I think I really got lucky finding this opportunity with this business and I'm very excited to, uh, close it, remodel it, um, open it with a brand-new attitude and with that Stonepoint Grill coming down the street, I think we're just gonna, I think the future looks very optimistic, so I'm very excited about it. I hope you'll give me your, uh, put your faith in me because me and my wife are doing a very good job.
Can you dream with dreams? What do you see, you, you see it looking like?
Um, what I, my dream, my dreams, I'd have a nice kitchen in there, whether I end up taking over the Red Bird space eventually or just putting my own in within the, within the Ridgewood. Uh, and I want to cater to an older crowd, um, more adult, I try to get that train traffic. Uh, I want to have it so it's easy to come into the bar. Right now it's sort of dark and dingy. We really want to brighten it up and get people coming in off the street. I think there's a lot of activity on Ridge Road with the new apartments and all the construction that's going on. I just, it's gonna be great. So I'm looking forward to having more of an open style, maybe even have a garage door that opens to invite people in like they have in the city. You know, there's so many cool things you could do these days with, uh, new technology. Uh, I think there's a lot of missed opportunity in that corner, so I intend to grab it, so.
You should be aware, a new metro station is coming in as well.
Very excited, yeah.
Construction of that should start either late this fall or early spring.
It's gonna be great. And it, so.
Comments or questions from anyone in the audience? Word comments, trustee Purcell.
I just want to wish you the best of luck. I think it's fantastic. You're right. This is the right time.
Yeah.
Um, and you're good to capitalize on that. I think it's great. I wish you the best of luck.
Thanks a lot.
Trustee Baloo.
Trustee Swishes.
Thank you.
That's like a good plan.
Trustee Roman, what are your favorite places?
Well, actually, I was gonna say, my husband and I went to the Ridgewood after our first date.
Yeah.
And I agree with you. Um, I know Jimmy, but, um, the place has really been let go and I can sense your excitement.
Yeah.
I'm excited to see what you're gonna bring to it and give it a nice facelift. Are you gonna keep the name?
It seems that way. It's hard to, my wife's like, let's call it the ridge. I'm like, it's always gonna be the ridge or the Ridgewood. I, I think there's no, there's no doubt. I mean, I, I don't think there's anything around keeping the name. Probably gonna redo the letters outside, have new letters, so they'd like the new Ridgewood, but the word's out that I'm buying it. I'm so excited, uh, the calls and the feedback of people. It's just been, I feel like a celebrity walking around town, people running up to me. It's pretty funny, you know, so, but yeah, it's a good thing. Very excited.
And with five kids, you have a building workforce.
Yes, yes. So, you know, anyone looking for a job, I'm hiring, I need bartenders, I need white staff, uh, I need all kinds of help. So I hope to hire from within the community because that's the best way to go, so.
With, with all that being said, may I have a motion to direct staff to prepare an ordinance to increase the class one liquor license?
So moved. Second.
Been moved by trustee Purcell, seconded by trustee Roman. Roll call, please.
Trustee Purcell.
I.
Trustee Baloo.
I.
Trustee Willis.
I.
I.
Trustee Roman.
I.
President Hope.
Hi. Get to work.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks a lot.
Then.
Appreciate it. I know they're not.
Just keep us surprised.
I really tense society.
Yeah. General Board Discussion, trustee Purcell. Trustee Bill. Trustee Will.
Nothing.
Trustee Roman.
Nothing.
Mr. Haney, even when you're not a board member, do we have an important announcement?
Yes, yes, Mayor. I wanted to mention to everyone, everyone listening, all of our residents, all of our board members, stakeholders, the village's last warm weather event of the season is quickly approaching. That is Homewood's Fall Fest on September twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two, from twelve noon to nine o'clock P.M. We have any, and they, and an award-winning list of businesses and eateries and drink places, establishments that will be there. You do not want to miss this year. We also have our annual chili fest that will be happening at the Fall Fest between two o'clock and five o'clock P.M. So if you feel so inclined, or if you've been told that your chili is the best chili in the Midwest, we invite you to participate in this chili cook-off to prove the naysayers are wrong. So that's the chili cook-off is actually at the fest from two o'clock to five o'clock P.M. September twenty-fourth, two thousand two. Don't miss this year's Fall Fest.
How does someone get into the chili fest?
Mayor, that was a good, good question. I had the answer. Contact, please contact either Marla Youngblood or Antonio Urbansky. Just call any number at the village and ask for Marla Youngblood or Antonia Urbansky.
Okay. With that, may I have a motion to enter into executive session to discuss collective bargaining?
So moved. Second.
Then move by trustee Roman, second by trustee Purcell. Roll call, please.
Trustee Purcell.
I.
Trustee Baloo.
I.
Trustee Willis.
I.
Trustee Roman.
I.
President Hope.
Hi. We stand adjourned from regular session. Thank you all. And then, please, come in and say.